All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Workshop at Regan School. Welcome, everyone. We'll begin this evening with a silent prayer. Thank you. And tonight, we also have some students who would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. First on the agenda is Mrs. Raza, our school principal. Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening.
Welcome, President Brown, all commissioners, Superintendent Mr. Henry, and everyone else that's here. I want to start by just mentioning that we have some boys and girls here from Regan School, and we've started learning a little bit about Black History Month a little earlier, knowing that you were all going to be here today, February 1st, as we celebrate Black History Month. So I'm going to ask those teachers and boys and girls, we're going to start with 5th grade, and so we'll have Mr. Welch bring up Alandra, and they're just going to share, the boys and girls we have here today, just share what they've been learning. So we'll start with Mr. Welch in 5th grade with Alandra.
Please use the microphone so that we hear everybody.
Absolutely.
Hello?
Hi, everyone. My name is Alex Welch. I teach 5th grade here. So for our Black History Month presentation, we learned about the Little Rock Nine, who were the first Black students to integrate into greatest school in Arkansas. And our students wrote a first-person perspective about what it might be like to be one of those students on that day, actually in that month, and all the challenges that came with it. And Alandra, in particular, wrote a really great piece. It was really moving to me, I think it will be for you guys as well. All right?
Thank you.
This is Alandra Armaro.
September 12, 1957. Dear journal, it's been hard to think lately. I remember walking into school, I will never forget what they said to me. I felt like it won't stop. It became days, then turned into weeks, turned into months, and finally, the school year ended. The first day was the worst. The things they said, it was like it would never stop. Sometimes, I was so close to cracking. I wanted to do something, but I wanted to be the better person. I felt like I wanted to turn my back and fight, but I would make it worse for the others. They threatened me, my family. Sometimes, I wanted to burst out, but I would not know what to say. How could I put it into words if it's too much for even my soul? If I would always cover my face so they would never see that I would cry, I was thinking, be strong, be strong. I would run to the bathroom with my face full of tears. I keep going because I know that pain is temporary, and I'll keep fighting, and I'll show them that it doesn't matter. I will show them that what they did won't affect me. Always, when I go back, I pray that they will understand how it feels to feel like you're dying of hate inside, but I shrug it off. I don't know how to describe it, because if I do, I'm scared I'm going to lose myself in anger. Because when I get a chance, the words don't come out, and then I make a fool of myself, and I realize, what am I doing? Most of the time, I point a finger at God and tell him to do something, because nothing is working. Everyone looks at me, and I feel like nobody knows me. I got to get used to this feeling, even though I'm scared to look in the future because things might never change.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alandra. You did a wonderful job, wonderful writer you're turning into. For Grade 4, we're going to have Ms. Williams bring up Natalie Jumalai.
Hello. So Natalie and Jumalai have done some research on people that they chose that were not the most famous people that most kids normally choose. They decided to choose someone that maybe you hadn't heard of yet. So Natalie?
Hi, my name is Natalie, and I learned about Harriet Bee Gees' Stower. She was born in 1811, died in 1896. Important contributes in civil rights movement. She was a author of Uncle Tom's Cabin. Her book helped people understand slavery was wrong. Famous quotes, "Never give up, for that is just the place and time the tide will turn."
Hi, my name is Jumalai. I learned about Mary McLod Batum. She was born on July 10, 1875. She died on May 18, 1955. Important contribution in the civil rights movement. Mary was a leading dictator and civil rights activist. Famous quote, she said, "The whole world opened to me when I learned to read."
Thank you, girls. For 3rd grade, we'll have Mrs. Schmid bring up our students.
Hello, my name is Christine Schmid, and I'm teaching 3rd grade here at Regan School. And we have started to learn about our nonfiction and text features. So the students started with their first biographies and research. So I'm going to ask them to come over here.
Introduce yourself. My name is...say who you are.
Hi, my name is Kayden.
Go ahead and read my biography.
My biography is about Nelson Mandela. He was born 1918 and died 2013. Nelson Mandela is most famous for him being the first Black president of the South. One interesting fact is his name meant to pull off a branch off a tree. And his character trait is expiring. Nelson Mandela was expiring because he went to prison fighting for freedom.
My name is Chelsea. My biography is about Michelle Obama. She was born on January 17, 1964. She is most famous for being the First Lady of the United States from 2009 to 2017. One fact of Michelle Obama is she is an American lawyer. Her character trait is a role model, because Michelle Obama was the first African-American, and she's also a lawyer.
Hi, my name is Ashanti, and my biography is about Jackie Joyner-Kersee. She was born in March 13, 1962, and famous for she won for a long jump, and the first woman to learn then...
Tell us about her goal, important fact.
Important facts, she won three gold medals, golden medals, and one silver medal.
Hi, my name is Gianna, and my biography is about Rosa Parks, and she was born February 4, 1913, and she died October 24, 2005. And she was famous for, because she was the first feature...
Film producer.
Film producer by Mark... By Mark Studios. One important fact about Rosa Parks is that she had a prior introducer with James Blake, the bus driver, who demanded she... Not moved, that she moved to the back of the bus.
Hi, my name is Zachary. My biography is about Martin Luther King Jr. He was born on January 15, 1929, and he died on April 4, 1968. He was most famous for leading the civil rights movement. One important fact about him is his last public speech foretold his death. His character trait is courage. I know this because he gave many speeches in front of angry mobs for months. He got arrested many times because of this.
Hi, my name is Zaira, and I've learned about Marion Anderson. She was born February 27, 1897, died April 8, 1993. She was famous for, was an African-American control, and one of the most celebrated singers of the 20th century. She was a part in fact, she was recent, Marion Anderson, famous is because she was a wonderful voice, and she used it. Her character traits, she is musical. Her... Because she... Because she sang the different cities.
Thank you very much. Thank you, boys and girls, for showing everything that you've been learning. We're all very proud of you. It's not easy to come in front of a large crowd. So I'd like everyone to give our Regan students that were here tonight another round of applause. And be listening for your name tomorrow morning over the loudspeaker. And thank you, families, for joining us. You're welcome to stay for our short presentation on Regan School as well. Again, let's give them another round. I also want to thank our Regan School teachers and staff that are here. They've been working very hard with our boys and girls here, and very dedicated staff. So thank you. I'd like to have Ms. Williams come up to the front. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and get started with our short presentation on what we're doing here at Regan School. To my right, I have Mrs. Milo, teaching VP, Vice Principal, Teaching Vice Principal, and I have Ms. Williams, our computer teacher. We're going to start with our mission here. So I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Milo.
All right. Our mission is to educate all students to high academic standards in an environment that cultivates character, fosters pro-social behavior, and inspires the love of learning. And then we have our school vision statement. Our vision is for all students to become proficient in effective communication, critical reasoning, and logical problem-solving. We seek to meet the needs of all learners with a student-centered, data-driven learning community, where we continually collect, analyze, and act on student performance data to improve teaching and learning.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, so today's agenda, again, it's a very brief and short agenda, but it's what our commitments are here at Regan School. So number one, being academic achievement. I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're doing for PBIS, for those positive behaviors, and then how we tie in our family and community. So the first thing we'll take a look at is our academic achievement and what we're doing here. As far as English Language Arts, we're working on having our students increase their reading proficiency in the area of phonics, fluency, and comprehension. In this picture here, you'll see students working on the Foundations Program, and what they're doing is they're tapping out their sounds to spell and read words when necessary, but they're tapping out their sounds. For ELA, in the schedule, we have time for whole group and small group instruction to meet the needs of all of our students. Moving on to our second goal is math. So for all of our students in kindergarten through 5th grade, we want them to increase math proficiency by demonstrating a variety of computational fluency strategies and productive dispositions outlined in the Standards of Mathematical Practice. Here, you'll see one of our teachers, Mrs. Defazio, working with a small group of students. Again, for math, we also have whole group instruction and small group instruction to meet the needs of our students. Each week, we have instructional data team meetings. So one week, we'll have math. The following week will be English Language Arts, and they alternate. And so what we do is we take this time, myself being in there, our coach, whether it's math or literacy, and the teachers, and we have a collaborative effort. And what we do is we take a look at the learner-centered problems. So what are students struggling with at that time? Our problem of practice, so what do we have to add or change to our instruction? We come up with an instructional plan to be ready to implement, and then we monitor that plan. Again, that's done each week, once a week. Our third goal here is to foster a positive learning environment that supports high-quality teaching and learning, and engage families and the community as partners in the educational process. So some of the things we're implementing this year is making sure that staff teach and model those positive behaviors and routines and cues in all the different school settings. Staff also facilitates daily morning greetings to all of our students. We have staff that support the school-wide initiatives, that support parental involvement. Each class participates in a monthly take-home project that displays and celebrates the individual differences. So when you walked in, you might have seen that bulletin board. And what happens is each month, a different grade level has a take-home project to display and celebrate different cultural differences. And also, we have professional development going on this year for all staff for the social-emotional learning during the school year. I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Williams, who helps out with the after-school program, the extended school year.
Hello. So our ESH program, ones from 3 to 5, I think you saw our kids hopping on the bus as you arrived today. A little chaotic, but it usually works pretty smoothly. So when they come from 3 to 5, we have snack, and then we've broken our day in a goal to increase our academic achievement with our kids. We've chosen them for, they're the kids that just need a little bit of extra help, and we can provide that to them in that short amount of time. So for math, we see them in small group. Some of them are working on iReady, and then they have a specific center that they go to where they can work on the skill that they need. ELA is very similar. They work in small groups with us and with each other. And then Lexian centers. For our science piece, our kids love to do science, and unfortunately, we don't get a whole lot of time in the day to do that. So this is a little extra for them. They're working on coding, teaching how do you do block coding using code.org. We're using Mystery Science, where we watch a quick video where they're asked a question, "Why is snow white?" And then we examine why snow is white, and then we make white snow. And how do we do that? So, and then we've used some, we've borrowed some materials, where we've built some Arduino boards with our kids in the after-school program. It's a long day for them, so we try to start out around snack time. We try to save five minutes of that time for a little stretching and getting a little active, because they've been here for a long time. And we're trying Star Wars yoga next week. Shh, don't tell. So we have, it started just a week ago, so my kids that did their research, they did that in a week or less. They're in grades 3, 4, and 5. It's two hours a day. We focus on math, mystery science, ELA, and a few minutes on PE. So we include a small group instruction and a technology component for the whole day.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Moving on to PBIS at Regan School, so here at Regan School, we're the Regan Rhinos that rock. And so our expectations, oops. Respectful, honest, in uniform, never late, optimistic about the future, and safe. And every morning, the kids are so proud. One child, every morning, comes down to make announcements with me in the office, and they're so proud to say their pledge. So for PBIS, we do have a team here at the school that meets each month to review data and put systems in place. So for an example, we noticed recently our bus referrals for discipline went up. So that seemed to be a problem. So what happened was they looked at all the data. They determined it was the bus write-ups that were a problem, and so they put a plan in place. And the system was to reward, through positive behavior, the Regan Rhino bus tickets up there. So Mrs. Milo met with all the bus drivers and said, "Okay, this is what we're going to do. We want to eliminate those behaviors going on in the bus, because we're finding a lot of time we have to investigate situations that were going on in the bus." And so we put that into place. Also, good behavior is recognized with tickets to redeem at the school store. And there's an enthusiastic effort by all staff to improve behavior and build those relationships with students and families. And that's what we really want the end result to be. And then moving on to family and community. I'm going to start with the PTO, who plays a huge part here at Regan School. We have an active PTO that meets monthly in the evening and plans events for our students and families. They plan, they volunteer. One of the things they do is they purchase T-shirts for all the students for Field Day. And they also do a lot of fundraising to help out with paying for field trips. They host different events, such as Book Bingo Night. They have a Holiday Shop, plant sale. Pretty much every month, they have something that they're working on to help the school and our students. They've, just to name some things, they've received donations from Costco, for example, to help out as well. And they do a variety of staff appreciation events. We also have a school governance council here. Currently, we do have our seven parents, five teachers, and two community members that meet each month to discuss and plan how we can work together to increase academic achievement. For community partners, we have Stop &amp; Shop on Chase Avenue, and we also have Texas Roadhouse in Waterbury that works with us. One of the things that Stop &amp; Shop helped organize for us was Fill the Cruiser, Back to School Event. So it was on a Saturday, we had some students come down, we had a lot of staff come down, and for a good chunk of the day, we were trying to get the customers going into Stop &amp; Shop to help donate some of the school supplies that we could use, because when it comes to halfway through the year, we tend to run out. So that was very helpful. And as you could see there, we had our cruiser with some of our police officers there as well, and we had tons of things that we filled the cruiser with. Some of the things coming up with school governance councils, they do a book swap twice a year. They've already done one, and they plan on having another, actually coming up very soon. They're planning on implementing one book, one read, and that's coming up in March. They're working with the teachers on how to implement that and have a plan ready. We also have the Science Expo that they're working on. That'll be in late April. And also kindness rocks. So it's going to be art and painting rocks to beautify our school garden, which we'll talk about shortly. Moving on to Regan School Family Engagement, another piece of that. So we offer here at Regan School parent engagement workshops. So for example, literacy workshops, math workshops, Power School, just to name a few. During the day and even in the evening, multiple times during the year, for parents to learn more about what their kids are learning and how they can help them at home. We also have take-home book bags. It's like a lending book system for students to promote literacy, and there is a parent component with questions. We also have a connection with Mega Education through Hartford. They help us with the Student of the Mark and Period Ceremony, where our families also join in for that ceremony. And also Home Depot, we have a community connection with Home Depot. One of the things they've done for us was they donated a picnic table for our playground area. And we've also participated in McEducator Night, and it was an opportunity for staff and families just to build relationships outside of the school. And the kids really enjoyed seeing their teachers make some burgers and fries for them. It was a really fun night. So using technology between the school and the home here at Regan, through the district, obviously, we have Lexia and Mathi Ready for grades 2 to 5. We also have MobiMax, which is correlated with the standards. The Smarter Balance Practice Tests, so they get comfortable taking tests. We also always provide a resource list for free websites. We give those out throughout the year and even at our workshops, because families are always asking for any websites where they can get their children on to help them. Also, we use, obviously, Power School. A lot of the teachers here use Class Dojo to communicate with families. And also, I use Remind.com. So for families that join in, in addition to the Iris Alerts, I also do the Remind.com, where it goes right to their text messages. And also, we're part of the district website, so we have that as well. I'm going to hand the next portion over to Ms. Williams, so she could talk about our partnership with DEEP.
So I have, instead of spending my summer teaching summer school, I work for the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and I work for the State Parks Division. Through them and their Division of Public Outreach and Education, we've been able to kind of be their test pilots for their programs. I'm willing to donate our kids as long as they want to continue to participate with us. So last year, our 4th graders went and did fish stocking at Fulton Park. We made all three news channels by noontime. We were on WFSB, TNH, and Fox 61 by noontime when we were out there. We also took part in the Family Outdoor Discovery Program. So as 4th graders, we went over to Black Rock State Park. All of our kids got to try canoeing. You can see the top photo, Elizabeth's giving a thumbs up to canoeing. They had a National Geographic author come in and do a science experiment with them. And then we had a night animals program, and families came and joined us. So the kids went out and did the canoeing and did the science experiment on their own. And then at 5:00, families came, and we did dinner, and we cooked out, did marshmallows, the whole experience with them. So this year, but they all went home at about 9:30, 10:00. So this year, we decided, why not stay over? So we invited those same kids back and said, "Let's do this." And so our bottom photo is us camping out that night. We happened to get a really nice Friday night. We went over to the park and provided tents to everybody that needed them, all the families. So we had small families, large families, and everybody stayed. We did fishing the next morning with the care folks. We had a demonstration with search and rescue dogs. We did some night sky watching, and everyone had a good time, oddly enough. I also get the privilege of overseeing the school garden. So it started with a grant from Project Learning Tree. And then last year, we were able to get a grant from the University of Connecticut's Extension Division. We had an after-school program that they paid for. So we had the fitness and nutrition. They also provided us with additional garden beds. We're up to nine garden beds outside now. We have two that are raised with covers, so we can grow year-round in those as well. They also provide us with some family nights. We took our garden produce and ran it like a community-supported agriculture, CSA. So families sign up for a week, they have to come and water, and they get to take all the produce... the produce that week. So we had over 100 pounds of produce that we got from our garden that families took home over the six weeks in the summer. We've done some professional development with outdoor classroom. If we've got this amazing space, it doesn't do us any good if no one goes outside and uses it. And we love to get the kids outside and see science in action, and so they can do that. They can, we started, a lot of our plants last year were things that they started in the classroom, and then we took out. We had pumpkins that just overtook the entire area, and they started with these tiny little seeds from the classroom. This year, we've gotten a grant from Recycle CT, so we'll start doing some composting. So we have the fruit and veggie waste that we get when we get our daily fruit and vegetables. And so that, those things, the, you know, the piece of carrot that the kid didn't eat, we're going to collect all that and put it, we have a barrel composter, and we're going to compost it and use it back in our garden. So that's our plan for this year.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. So as you could see, we try to give our students as many opportunities as possible when it comes to learning about all different things. So I just want to thank everyone for your support here. That concludes my short presentation at Regan. I didn't know if you had any further questions.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, you're doing a great job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It sounds like you're utilizing every resource you can find.
I sure am. My staff knows I love them.
I witnessed tonight, and I saw on the presentation, many of my 95 percenters I talk about a lot, those kids doing the right thing. Glad you're addressing the 5 percenters on your buses.
We are, we're trying to, yes, we are.
So you're doing what you can, you and your staff.
Yes, we are.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
What are we not doing for you?
Well, it's interesting you ask, because I was talking to Commissioner Harvey earlier, and we were talking about a possible gym. So one of the things, I hear some claps, so thank you. One of the things, one of the things, and please join in, anyone, one of the things is that we don't have a gym. And so here at Regan School, what tends to happen is, on a cold day like today, we don't have our kids go outside. It's just way too cold. And so what happens is, in the morning, they can use this room, which we use the cafeteria. We call it the all-purpose room, but it becomes a cafeteria very soon. And then what happens is the kids go out in that little hallway, right as you enter, that little hallway, and they have to play basketball. We even put a picture up there. If you could see, it's right in the middle, and you could see these mats, and that's that little hallway, and that's how they have their physical education. And so we want to give kids an opportunity to, you know, obviously, exercise, but even enjoy a large room, so they can learn different things in a large room like a gym. So that's one thing. Another thing is, I could use desks. We have desks that are very, very old, chairs that are broken. So I know that's one thing that I could definitely use. We're looking into getting some more material. Spire is one of them. I'm waiting to see if I have enough money in the budget to purchase. But I know, those are just some of the things. But if you'd like, I can make you a list.
Well, I was going to say, if you wanted to send me something separately and not send them tonight, but obviously, you're more than willing to tell us.
Well, I take every opportunity I can.
I guess. But if you would like to send me more info, that'd be great.
And I can work with my staff on that as well.
You know, I know some, you know, we have, like a lot of our schools, we have some struggles with, you know, how we show our performance. But tonight's presentation really shows us, you guys are trying to do the best you can with what you have. So certainly, please, send me a greater list. Sometime when those of us that sit at this table maybe poke people, different things happen. I won't say why, but they do. So please, please send us that information. I absolutely believe you guys are doing the best with what you have. And that's typical of many of our schools. Not to take away from what you've done, but we know the struggles you have. Of course, we have barriers too, but I would love to hear more. Gym is a big one. But certainly, there's no reason why you should be looking for furniture. There's no reason for that. Okay? And we need to address that. Okay? So thank you for your candor. But more importantly, thank you for these great students who spoke to us tonight. And I also like to thank your teachers for having them to reach further and not just talk about those who we know about every day in Black history, but those who have really laid the foundation for others who came after. So I think that was a great presentation, that you reached out to teach your children others who have affected American history. So thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Vice President Harvey.
Yes, I, you know, when, I remember, last year, I came here in Era, because the meeting was down at Wham's, and you gave me a ride down there, so I just want to personally thank you.
You're welcome, anytime.
Because I had no idea how I was going to get down there.
I was getting ready for Uber.
But, but, yeah, something. I mean, I would, anything, but.
No, I meant, I was getting prepared to start a job for Uber.
All right, all right, all right. But I also, it was at that time that I observed Grandmaster Baldwin teaching karate in this room. And it was at that time, I said, "You guys need a gym." You know, and he was making do with, he had a lot of students in the class, and he's a great, great teacher. And, you know, I think that's something we should definitely look into. I think you also need, your sign out here needs a little improvement.
The red one, as you want. I said that to my husband this morning. We talk every morning on the way to work, and I said, "You know what? I need to work," but it comes down to money.
I know.
So.
I know. We know this. We know that we're talking about money. But that sign has been there, I don't know how long, and it's very difficult to read. So I think we should look into something where we can at least, you know, if you don't know where the school is, you'll find it, you know? So let's, we'll talk about that. So when that list, send that list to all of us, all right? To the whole board, and then we'll see what we could do. No promises, but nonetheless, you know?
I appreciate that. When I go home, I'm going to tell my husband, "You and I were thinking the same thing."
The sign, yes. And I personally want to thank the students. February is the beginning of Black History Month, and I look at that and see what the schools are doing to incorporate, you know, studies in that regard. I like the idea, and I've said that to our deputy superintendent, that I want to, I would hope that the schools would look a little bit further, because the information is there. We have our great Americans, great Black Americans. But to look a little bit further, and I really appreciate that during this presentation, that that was done. And I want to thank the, it's very difficult standing in front of a crowd and to speak. It's very difficult. But the time to start that with the kids is now, all right? So that when they grow up and they become adults, you know, it's like, they don't have any problems doing that. But thank you personally for that presentation. I enjoyed it much, and they can continue on. This is a month-long celebration, so continue with this celebration. But I also wanted to point, I saw in the crowd here, I see parents, and I think we should give them a hand for their participation, because...
I agree.
We, we are, you know, in the district, looking at ways we can improve family engagement and look at what barriers we have standing in the way of that. So in fact, we're going to talk about family engagement policies this evening. And then next week, we have some more policies coming down the pipe from the state of Connecticut. So we need to make sure that we engage the families and that they're involved with their students, their children's education. So I applaud you for what you're doing with that. I applaud the fact that your parents are here, you know, backing you and backing the school. So continue on, I'm very, very pleased. And I'm not just saying this because you gave me a ride to the, to the, to the meeting. I'm saying this because it just stands out, that you're doing a great job here. And, and your staff, you're doing a great job. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I do have to commend my staff. They're very committed. They do everything they can for our students, so I do have to commend them again. And you might notice, we did hang up some schoolwork, some student work behind, behind us as well, for you to look at. But thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I also want to commend you and great, who's the grant writer, getting all these grants and amazing, amazing community partnerships. But I also wanted to thank you, I noticed I had an opportunity to look at your website, and I noticed that you were giving parents great information about the influenza epidemic. So that's really critical. It's very clear, and you linked it to the information on the Waterbury Health Department website. So thank you very much. It's because, parents, you know, there's so much illness going around. If you could look at this website to see, you know, what you have to do, and please, keep your children home if they do have a fever, because it's very contagious. So I'm very grateful that you're putting that on the website. And, you know, a shout out to all the school nurses who are working in our public school system tremendously to address these health issues. So thank you very much for, for doing that on your website.
And Nurse Claire is actually right over there.
All right, great job. And, and note that the Waterbury Health Department has issued a lot of, and updated a lot of information through technology, and maybe you could look at that, because there's a lot of information that they are giving to look at that. As a matter of fact, they've started something, every Friday at 9:30, they're giving health messages out to the district. So, and they're very short, they're like 30 seconds, and it's really pertinent information for our families. So get a chance, look at that, it might be helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks a lot, everybody.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public speaking. Is there anybody here from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Okay, seeing nobody signing up. Okay, the next is Attorney Shaw with the Saw Arbitration Award. And Mayor O'Leary is with us.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Deputy Superintendent Henry.
Would you please use the microphone, hon?
Sure, is it on? Can you hear me better? Good evening. In your packet, everyone should have the Arbitration Award with respect to the School Administrators of Waterbury contract, as well as a memorandum. It's actually addressed to the Board of Aldermen. It was submitted along with the Arbitration Award to the city clerk last week. I'll go through my summary of the award. This is an award after negotiations between the Board of Education and the School Administrators' Bargaining Unit under the Teacher Negotiation Act. We entered binding arbitration, started on December 4th, and we had four full-day hearings along with briefing of several issues that the parties were unable to reach a resolution on. So in sum, I'll go through this memorandum that's in your packet. The first issue is the duration of the contract. It's a three-year agreement from July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021. With respect to the wages, the arbitration panel awarded to the Saw unit a 1% general wage increase in the first year. In the second year, they awarded a step advancement. It should be noted, however, that the step advancement introduces a new step grid that in fact reduces the cost of a step by about 3/4 of a percent. And that's, the budget impact is about 3/4 of a percent for this salary line item. For people at top step in that year or two of the agreement, they will receive a $1,000 annuity payment, which is pensionable monies to them. And in the third year, the panel awarded another 1% general wage increase to everyone, all school administrators. I have included the projected actual dollar cost. Those are projections, they're estimates based on the current census. Those are certainly subject to adjust a little bit if the census changes. The percentage increase of the wage award is approximately 4.7% year-over-year. So it's a cumulative 4.7%. Another issue that is a financial issue that the board put on was with respect to salary buffer language for displaced administrators. It's issue number three in the Arbitration Award. It limits the salary buffer, which currently exists for an administrator who may lose his or her position, because the position is eliminated by the board. And they would, under the current language in the contract, lose $1,000 regardless of what position they were displaced to in every successive year until they reached the appropriate salary level. The Arbitration Award limits the salary buffer to three years.
Could you clarify what that means?
Certainly. So if there's a position that is a school administrator position that is eliminated by the board, and that particular administrator is displaced or fills a lower-tier position, so say a principal, say a high school closes you, a principal loses his or her position and is displaced to a vice principal at a middle school. There's a, there's a salary differential between those positions. And currently, there's a $1,000 salary buffer, which means each year that the, following year that the administrator is displaced, they would make only $1,000 less, even though all other persons in those positions would be making significantly less money. So the cost savings aren't realized for, in some cases, it could be 30 years.
So just if I, so the cap means that that $1,000 reduction can only happen for three consecutive years, and then they bottom out at that?
Then they have to go to the sales.
So if they made 140, the least they would be able to then make would be 137?
No. What happens is after the third year, it phases out. It goes away, so that they would be placed at the appropriate salary level for that given position.
For that position.
Issues on the table, I'm only referencing the issues that are actually changes to this contract. So beginning in year three, which is the 2020-21 school year, the city decreases its percentage funding of the administrators' HSA from 50% to 45%. There's approximately $12,000 a year that will be saved based on the 2,000-4,000 HSA model. In year two, which is 2019-2020 school year, the administrators' percentage of the high-deductible premium cost share will increase from 20 to 21%. And then in year three, it will increase from 21% to 21.5%. So modest changes, but as everyone knows, health insurance has become increasingly more expensive, so modest changes are what we need to accomplish at this point in time. Another issue that was decided by way of the Arbitration Award has to do with the bumping rights in Section 8E5 of the contract. There's language that's been introduced to clarify that the bumping rights were only intended for the positions listed in that subsection. So there's a list of positions ranking, starting from high school principal, and I believe it's down, I think it includes a supervisor, a 10-month supervisor position. And ultimately, the, when the director positions were added to this unit, the understanding from the board was that they would not be entitled to be able to bump. And for anyone that doesn't know, a bumping right is when your position is eliminated. If you are, have more seniority, and you are qualified for a position, and there are no vacancies, you can essentially bump people out of their positions. It's standard in a lot of labor contracts, not necessarily in, in this context. However, I think everyone could foresee if there were a bumping issue that arose, the chaos, the domino effect that would impact all of the other, potentially impact all of the other positions. So the board's position was, the language that was awarded was clarifying language. The directors were added to the contract in, during the last contract. contract, and they were only added in the salary provision. There was no, there was no effort to put them in a different, anywhere else in the contract, any other contract language. So additional changes that were made part of the award. There's some language added to clarify the expectation of the board that central office administrators attend meetings of the administration and the board after the conclusion of the Student Day. That's language that'll be found in Article 5, Section 1A of the contract. There were some changes clarifying the language added to the procedures that were in place for filling a vacant or newly created position. Those changes include the elimination of language that supports internal vacancy posting prior to external posting, and language that provides for greater involvement of the talent and professional development supervisor in the overall process for filling those vacancies. Finally, there's also language in the contract that modified the existing language to make it mandatory for administrators' advisory councils to meet monthly. Does anyone have any questions about the award?
Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. First, I want to thank you for your guidance when we met for negotiations. Overall, I thought they went very well, was very cordial. I think your leadership was a big part of that, so thank you. So how many questions do you think I have? I have one.
Two.
I have one, just one. Could you summarize, because you didn't in your summary, is the work from home on things such as snow days? We kind of went back and forth on that. And I just want to hear a summary, because I really want to give that to the administration to be able to do that. I think there's plenty of work they could do from home on such days that the school may be closed. So, you know, when I go through this, I'm kind of getting a little dizzy. So if you could just summarize that for me?
Well, in essence, the school administrators, as you see from the award, were seeking to introduce language into the contract whereby, on a day when the school was closed, they would be permitted to elect to work from home. I think the underlying issue that the board had with the final language that was proposed by the school administrators really had to do with the discretion resting exclusively with the administrators to choose a day to work from home. There are days when schools are closed, as we know, because of transportation issues and safety issues, whereby the rest of the staff in the building will report to the building. And I think with the number of snow days or inclement weather days, I don't think we wanted to have the potential to have, you know, 10, 12 days a year as work-from-home days. So we could not agree on the language ultimately. And you were there, and we did have considerable discussions back and forth.
Okay. I'm okay with the judgment, obviously, decision. I do have a little more trust in our administrators to be upfront about what they do at home. You know, I still think the, we need to talk about that more, I think. Because I do think they could still get plenty of work done at home, as opposed to asking them to drive to school when we have 10 or 12 inches of snow. So I'm glad we're at least working towards that. I think that's a good thing for everybody. Although it's not a question, we still didn't approach absenteeism. You know I'm not going to give up on that. We talk about it for students all the time. And going forward, you know I'm going to bring it up again. So, but I think all in all, this was a very cordial meetings that we had. And I think, you know, we gave a little, we took a little, not took a little, but settled on a little. So I think we did okay. So thank you for your support in that.
Commissioner Adorno.
Hi, thank you, Madam President. So I just want a little bit of clarification about the bumping rights. So, for example, the ILDs or any other directors, so if they lose their position, they do not have bumping rights?
They do not have bumping rights. However, as members of this unit, they would be able to fill a vacancy for which they were qualified for?
So if there's another position available, they could, so if there's no other position, they pretty much lose their position in general? So, for example, if they worked for the city for 15 years or so, and they became a director, and if they lose that position, then if there's no open position, they pretty much lose their position in general?
Well, administrators still maintain tenure as teachers, if they had tenure here, and they would have the ability also to fill any teaching vacancy.
So will the, will it eventually be added in their contract, or is it just going to stay under the salary position, specifically for the directors? I'm just speaking.
My understanding was that when they, these positions were added to the unit, the understanding of the people that negotiated this, the board, the superintendent's office, was that there were these new positions where they would ultimately become members of the Saw unit, but that they wouldn't maintain those rights, the bumping rights, and that they wouldn't be able to push people out of their current positions.
Okay. I'm just trying to like understand that if they worked for the city, you know what I mean? If they started off as a teacher, it was a supervisor, and, you know, increasingly went as that position. I'm just trying to understand, you know, where the wording and the, how it was approved and stuff like that. Okay, thank you.
So I agree with Commissioner Van Stone, and it was a process, I guess that cordial might be a good description. But I think, at the end of the day, because of the fiscal crisis that the state of Connecticut is in, and because there is no opportunity for the city at this time to get additional education cost sharing grant money, I think that the arbitration panel recognized that with the, with the 4.7% over-three-year raise. I think we're going to see a lot more awards like that coming down in this calendar year and the years to come. I think that the one thing that we all need to be aware of is that without an increase in ECS funding, that there is going to be a budget crisis coming up. Now, we're just starting the preparation for the next budget. And I can tell you that it's not going to be pretty. And albeit this award was 4.7%, it's still unfunded. And so there's going to be no opportunity to get more Alliance money at this point, more ECS money at this point. And so any raises are going to fall directly on the budget. And any raises that aren't planted with resources from the state could, in fact, impact the taxpayers directly. So when you're at a salary range of, the median salary here is about $115,000 a year, you know, if you add it up, 4.7% still adds up to about a $5,000 per person raise. And that's very costly. And so at the end of the day, there's going to be, at least from my perspective, there's going to be some really difficult decisions that are going to be made in the next budget cycle, which is starting, as I mentioned to you before, has actually started in December, but is in full swing now. So I'm worried. You know, quite frankly, I'm very concerned, you know, because of the condition and the crisis going on in the state of Connecticut. I'm concerned about, you know, this unit. I'm concerned about the WTA. I'm concerned about every unit in the city, you know, non-education unit as well. There's just, these are very, very difficult times. And, you know, I can understand the angst. There are many people that were very disappointed with this award and angry about it. But at the end of the day, I think this is only the beginning of very difficult times to come. And that's, the reason I'm here tonight is to say that I think that the negotiations were fair. I was disappointed during some courses of the negotiations, but, you know, that's what happens. And I'm sure that the Saw administrators are very disappointed as well. But I think that these are, these are times that we haven't seen before. I would suggest that these times are much more difficult than the times that we were in when the Oversight Board was here. As a matter of fact, I can guarantee you, they're going to be more difficult than that, because there's just no money. And when there's no money, then there's going to be cuts. And when there's cuts, there's going to be angry people. And so obviously, the students come first, and after that, we try to figure out what's next.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate all your hard work and look forward to working with you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We'll be diving into that budget soon.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation, an update from our Boy Scouts of America, Connecticut River Council. I actually invited the scouts come, because I don't know if everybody's aware of the tremendous presence now we have of the Boy Scouts in our school district, and the wonderful programs that are going on in most of our elementary schools. And several principals have told me they really, they think it's a great, great program. So I wanted to give the board an update, because I was surprised myself at the depth and expansiveness of the Boy Scouts. So thank you for coming. Introduce yourselves, and you have about 10, 10 minutes?
That's fine. I hope I offer, I hope we offer a little levity to the prior discussions. I'm Marge Taggart-Dietrich. I'm the Director of Development for Connecticut Rivers Council Boy Scouts of America, a position that I've held for 10 years. I was actually in your shoes for the Town of Waterford probably 20 years ago, which made me realize how old I'm getting. So I applaud you all. This is a time commitment and a love from the heart. To my, I'm going to speak first, but to my right is Amy Von Cullen, who has been active in the Waterford community. She's a parent, Waterbury community, excuse me. She's a parent in this neck of the woods, was involved in a troop here, and currently serves as our Senior District Executive overseeing, as part of her responsibility, our Scout Reach Program. Manny Martinez is to my left. Some of you may recognize him. Manny was in the Boys and Girls Club in Waterbury, and we came down and recruited him and brought him to the council for our youth development programs. And he joined me in development about a year ago. We do have a longstanding relationship with Waterbury, and an extensive one that has gone back over 30 years, going back to the days of Brian Hall, when Brian was involved in this community. As a council, we serve 127 cities and towns, literally 2/3 of the state, with the exception of Fairfield and New Haven County. We have 19,000 youth. We have 8,000 volunteers and 28 full-time staff. We offer eight programs, many of which most people don't know about, pretty much all of which, at one time or another, have been in Waterbury. Cub Scouts, which is a family-oriented program, ages 5 to 10. The traditional Boy Scout program. And I have to tell you, there's nothing like camping in the winter in the rain for ages 11 to 18. Venturing, which is a co-ed program, 13 to 21. Sea Scouts, which we find more along the shore, obviously. Co-ed, 13 to 21 years of age. Exploring, which is an after-school career education program, ages 13 to 21. And the Waterbury Police Department PAO program hosts the largest one in our state with over 100 youth in it. Learning for Life, which is an in-school development character education program, grades 3 through 12. STEM scouting, I think many of you had the opportunity to see our Vortex out in the parking lot earlier, and I'll elaborate a little bit more on that program. That is a standalone program, separate from our traditional scouting program. It's co-ed, grades 3 through 12. And of course, our Scout Reach Program, which I think is in almost every elementary school here in Waterbury, as a lunch bunch program, we pay the staff to come facilitate that program. We do not utilize volunteers. Highlights for our council, we were chosen to pilot a Lions program in 2017, which brought our traditional Cub scouting program to the kindergarten level. We were piloted this year to do the soft launch for families and girls in our program, starting in kindergarten. Boy Scouts will then be a co-ed program from the very earliest ages of kindergarten right through the age of 21. We have been co-ed for many years, which many people don't know, from the age of 13 up. So we are just expanding it to the elementary level. And we were one of 13 councils nationwide to pilot STEM scouting in 2016. We're now the second-largest in the country, with a projection of being the largest in the country by the end of this year, with over 250% growth in membership. STEM, which I'll highlight for just a second before turning it over to Manny, is a standalone program, separate from our traditional scouting program. And our intention was to attract a whole new population of youth that might not have any interest in camping in a tent out in the rain or the snow, or canoeing down a river. They do not need to be registered in our traditional program to participate. It's curriculum-based. It was written by a group of former superintendents of schools and medical professionals in Knoxville, Tennessee. The curriculum aligns with the National Common Core standards. It is divided into five to six modules that cover a variety of topics over a recommended 32-week period, and 90-minute meetings, and include monthly field trips. The council invested capital money in the Vortex to augment the program two years ago. The programs are structured by grade levels, 3 through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 10. And it, too, is a co-ed program. We were recently awarded a grant to bring this program to every elementary school in Norwich School District after school. We've had it in Manchester, East Hartford, New Britain, Woodbury, and Colchester and Groton. I don't have the list in front of me. Many school districts. It is a grant-funded program. It has been funded through the 21st Century Grant. It has been funded through private funders. It has been funded through grants that I write. We're actively looking for communities to bring this program to. We currently are in Driggs here in Waterbury, which is the first school. It was funded in part by a private funder whose father went to that school as a youth.
Oh, nice.
And the balance of the funding came through the 21st Century Grant program. Manny and I are going to have a meeting with the Connecticut Community Foundation in the very not-too-distant near future to talk about bringing it to some of the other elementary schools. The population size in each school is typically about 30. The students are divided into labs. They do fun things like make ice cream, how to learn to make ice cream. They study Newton's Law relative to making catapults and learning how to paddle a boat. Each student is given a lab notebook. There is a parent portal that parents can log into and see what progress their children is making. And I think I sum up the STEM program by a middle school educator in Manchester who said that his 30 years of teaching math at the middle school, this is the greatest after-school science and math intervention program that he has yet to experience. So as a funded partner through United Way, of course, they love those outcomes and indicator things. And one of the things that we ask the teachers that we work with to do is to blind study the students. We don't want to know their name. We don't want to know how much money their parents make. We don't want to know what their household is like. All that we want to know is if they improve their academic grade between September and May as a result of having participated in this program. So far, we're seeing a very positive reflection in grade improvement, just that little bit of extra time of one-on-one and making it fun. It's not necessarily a teacher standing in front of you with a textbook. It's fun stuff. So Manny?
Yes. Thank you. It's always great to be back here in Waterbury. As Marge mentioned, I was at the Waterbury Boys and Girls Lab for about six years. So it's my second home. But for me, But for me, some of the things I'll be talking about is our history here in Waterbury. My scouting program goes over about 100 years. Our role at the council as professional scouters is to provide support and resources for all of our charter partner organizations, but also to continuously grow the program with all the great programs that Marge has mentioned. Our key focus is on building character, improving physical fitness, leading practical skills, and developing a spirit of community service. Another thing that Marge mentioned is our, the schools that we are actually at for our Scout Reach Lunch Bunch Program, we're at Wilson, Carrington, Drakes, Kingsbury, Reed Elementary, Walsh, Duggan, Regan, Bucks Hill, Hopeville, Washington Family Resource Center, and Chase Family Resource Center. We also have our Explorers Program with the Waterbury Police Department under the POW program, and is actually the largest in the state with over 100 youth. And as Marge also mentioned, our program, our STEM program has about 20 youth and is funded through our private funder, the 21st Century. I've been in youth development for about 14 years. Boy Scouts has been something near and dear to my heart. As I was, my time in Waterbury, we started two units there, as Cub Scout and the Boy Scouts. And the kids had a blast going to camp. I actually had the first time last year, opportunity to see what camping is all about with our program out in West Virginia for 2 and 1/2 weeks. With about 50,000 youth throughout the nation. And that right there is, was definitely an eye-opener. And our programs, definitely, you could tell the growth in our youth and also our leaders as it's a family program, and it's continuously grown, so.
Great.
Any questions?
If you could just tell us a little bit about what they do with the Lunch Buddy, or Lunch, what is it? Lunch Bunch. What do they actually do?
So Lunch Bunch, Rick Hunter, who some of you may or may not know, we hire a program specialist. We have found oftentimes in dealing with more urban areas that relying on volunteers to deliver a program is not necessarily the best model. And quite often, we encounter more and more single-family households. So doing a program after school is not to their benefit. So we developed a Lunch Bunch model. We hire a program specialist to run the program. It's about 30 minutes in duration. They come in for, during their lunch period. They eat lunch at the very beginning of the program with their program specialist. It's once a week. I take that back. I think in a few of the schools here, it's twice a week. For the most part, it's once a week. They're in small groups of about 15 boys on an average, or girls now. And they do character building, is activities that are their focus. I had the opportunity to spend an afternoon with Rick at Chase, and he played musical chairs. And I thought to myself, terrific, we're playing musical chairs in the middle of the afternoon of school. But what became an activity quickly became a team-building exercise in how to respect your friends. And at the end of the program, Rick actually gave them a flyer to take home that had R-E-S-P-E-C-T right across the top of it. But he used that simple childhood exercise to take down the road further. Many of these students become bonded with him. They look for him. He becomes their confidant. There's a very close relationship, a working relationship between the teachers and Rick, so that if there becomes either a behavioral or an academic problem, he oftentimes is called in to intervene on the student's behalf or to run interface for the teacher. So that's just an example. It's a, it becomes a character-building program primarily for the schools. And the teachers, in the majority of the schools, identify the students that need to participate in the program. Sometimes it's by choice. Sometimes it's not by choice.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Well, thank you very much. Hopefully, we can expand the program in Waterbury. Love to talk to you about the STEM initiative and any other way we can partner. So thank you very much for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is our favorite topic, money. Doreen Biola, monthly expenditure report for December 2017.
Hi, everyone. So yeah, this is through, on December, actually, six months through the year. Not much has changed from the November report I showed you as far as the bottom line goes. But you will see that the difference is, is that some of counts that we see are trending to go in the negative and the counts that we see that may grow into surpluses. And again, as you know, I mean, we're stringent as far as we can with the budget without trying to hamper the academic needs and operational needs that come up. So, any questions? Yes.
I'm struck by the snow removal line because we didn't budget for it. And I thought we did that all ourselves.
No, no, no. We did budget for it. It was part of, it's part of the overtime account. But we wanted to just, what we did during this current year was just create a new account just so that we can track the expenses for snow removal. It was just easier that way.
Okay, so it's not, it's not an unexpected expense?
No, it was part of the overtime account in the previous. We just pulled it apart.
Okay. That was it?
Okay.
At what point, I know we're, as the mayor had said, that we're going to be looking at next, you know, next fiscal year and so forth. At what point do we know where we are in terms of, are we, are we in a deficit situation at this point? Or when do we know that kind of information?
I think you'll start to see. I've been starting to work on the January report. So I think you'll have a better picture come next month.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
If I might, the Finance Committee is meeting Monday.
Yeah.
And part of the agenda is to work with Doreen to review where we are.
Okay, good.
To make those projections. So we've asked for some information. You should have received the agenda today. And so we'll have a good conversation with her on Monday after our special meeting.
Great, okay, thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Really appreciate your hard work. Thank you. All right. Number six, request approval of a MOU with Fairfield University for teacher participation in the Ann E. Fowler Literacy Fellowship Program. Noreen?
Hello.
Good evening.
Hello, good evening. Yes, thank you. So I was, am I speaking too loudly?
Were you the principal here?
I was.
So is this deja vu for you?
Yes, yes, thank you. I was asked to sit in this evening for Deana. I will try to address any concerns or questions that you have, but I'm not going to guarantee that I will be able to answer them. But we will share any questions that you would like to be responded to with Deana and communicate them with you. Okay, so the, Waterbury has an opportunity to participate in a partnership with Fairfield University to have teachers within our district attend and receive a graduate degree in the area of reading. They will take their classes in the evening times and on their own time. And they will be working closely with a mentor from Fairfield University associated with literacy how. And the mentor will be visiting the schools to review student data.
That's great.
And they will, the teachers will not have to pay for costs associated with tuition. Currently, there are seven districts that have signed the MOU, and they are Norwalk, Bridgeport, Stanford, Ansonia, Nogatuck, West Haven, and Danbury.
Great. And there's no, this is no cost to the district?
No cost at all to the district.
Wow, what an opportunity.
It's a great opportunity for the teachers. As you know, we're a literacy how district, and we're going to continue, we have the opportunity to train more teachers to become even better, highly qualified instructors in the area of reading.
Commissioner Van Stone, then Commissioner Awad.
Thank you, Madam President. It's just a comment for yourself and tell Deana, any partnership with Fairfield University is perfection.
Would you graduate from Tom?
Fairfield University. No, so thank you.
Thank you, I'll share that with Deana.
Thank you very much. And thanks to anybody who made this possible. We're very grateful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Liz, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Commissioner Awad.
Sorry.
My question goes back to things that the district agrees to, and that is provide Fairfield University with access to three years of coded database documents containing the fellows' classroom reading data and data for match comparison classrooms, which does not contain identifiable student information. It's only the data of the classroom of those teachers that are participating?
It is the data of the teachers that are participating. And then there'll be a comparative analysis of teachers who were not participating to see what the direct outcome in student performance.
So is that a one-for-one? So if one teacher participates, it's one other classroom? Or I'm just trying to get a handle on how we're gonna, what we're benchmarking each other against?
Well, I, again, my understanding is it is the one teacher that's participating in the program. And then it'll be compared to another teacher in a priority district or within the Waterbury Public Schools, depending on how Fairfield determines which teachers. Yes.
So, if I may, it's not necessarily another Waterbury classroom that we're being compared to?
Not necessarily, but that would be the most accurate data. But again, Commissioner Awad, I can clarify that with Deana.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea as to how we're, how are we going to measure this success against ourselves?
Apples to apples or apples to oranges.
I don't want to be compared against Fairfield.
Right. Right, but as you could, the only districts that are providing this opportunity are priority districts or urban. So again, the seven districts that I mentioned are, and then Waterbury would be the eighth.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, thanks, Noreen.
Thank you.
Next, let's see. Request approval of the new parent and family engagement policy for Title I students. It replaces current district-level Title I parent involvement policy.
Commissioner Brown, if I, I'm sorry, President Brown, if I may. If we could move to the next policy, the physical restraint policy, because we have Melissa Baldwin here that's going to speak to that. And then that way she could go home to her family.
Okay, we're coming to number eight. We'll table number seven for a minute. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Melissa Baldwin, Director of Special Ed. So in front of you, you have the draft physical and restraint seclusion updated policy. You'll notice, many of you were there last week when we went through the whole policy, that it is a little bit different than the last policy that was in place. However, since that policy was put in place, it was, there was a state law in 2015 that updated many of the items that need to be done for us to comply with that law. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Or if you look through and you have any questions for me during the week, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Any questions? So this pretty much puts us in compliance with the new state laws now?
Correct. We were already in compliance as of 2015 when the state law went into effect.
Okay.
We were, we were doing all of these practices at that time to stay in compliance. So it kind of, this just caught up with us.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Because we are moving away from using restraints unless it's a very, very necessary thing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I think that's the gist of it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Brown.
Now, Commissioner Sweeney?
Okay, so policy number 6172.4, which addresses parent and family engagement. The policy under Title I, most of the wording changes have to do with the change from No Child Left Behind to Every Student Succeeds Act. So there are language changes. To change it from a Title I parent involvement, and you'll see any place that we have that, that has been changed to parent and family engagement under ESA. And so those are most of, most of the language changes have to do with that, making that compatible with ESA because No Child Left Behind no longer exists. The two major changes to this policy, one is that there's a required annual evaluation that now is tied to measurable outcomes. So each year, the district's Title I program will need to identify barriers to greater participation by parents in program activities, with particular attention given to parents who are economically disadvantaged, disabled, have limited English proficiency, have limited literacy, or are of any racial or ethnic minority background. That's point one. Point two, the needs of parent and family members to assist with the learning of their children, including engaging with school personnel and teachers. And number three, strategies which can support successful school and family interactions. And those all came about, again, as measurable outcomes under ESA. The other major piece of this, under ESA, requires that this policy be reviewed by parents from the district, and that they be allowed to give input to the drafting of this policy. We achieve that through our DEPAC. And they spent several months, several months, I think there was about four meetings that they had with parents to go through it. The policy that you see before you is the policy from CAEB that the parents were most comfortable with. There was some, some conversation from the DEPAC Chair, Angela Holmes, that she wasn't sure that the processes were used was, gave her the results she wanted from the parents, that there were questions from the parents that she felt went unanswered this time around. So I will be meeting with Angela Holmes to see what went right, what went wrong. So that next year, when we have to review this again, this policy has to be reviewed by the Policy Committee and the parents every year. So next year, when we meet with them, that we have a much better process in place so that parents feel much more comfortable with their input to the policy. But at this point in time, this is a policy that the parents were comfortable with. This is the policy that our district leaders feel fits our district. And of course, that is legally binding, so this is where we are.
Any questions? Mr. Henry, I wonder if, as we move forward, if you could, you know, help the board understand what is the accountability system going to be related to this policy? Because right now, it looks like they're asking to evaluate. So I imagine we're trying to set some measures and set some outcomes that we're going to measure people by. So I think if you could keep us updated on that and how that's going to happen.
To Riddick Baron.
I mean, through, I mean, I'm sure Karen is involved with the DEPAC Council. So maybe that's being developed, Karen. But I just think it would be, you know, in light of this new policy for evaluations and more accountability, you know, maybe we could figure out how we're going to report on that. What's the, what's the plan look like?
Okay. Would it be okay, did you want to talk about this? Okay. Thank you, Madam President, through you. First, I'm going to start with, there seems to be some rumbling here with, in regards to when the statement is made that the parents felt comfortable. I'm not thoroughly agreeable to that statement being made. The accountability is what we're looking for. Visits that I've made to the state in regards to parent engagement, family engagement, does address accountability, Madam President. And I think we need to, Mr. Henry, ensure that finally, we will have accountability in this regard as far as taking data, maintaining data, making sure that it's reported, because I would like a report. If we could include that in our list, you know, our list of reports. And the data is there. My understanding is that the parent liaisons report on a monthly basis their activities in the school. Yet, that, that information goes somewhere, and we're not sure. So I think that's the start with the accountability. I'm going to also ask that in the future- I'm going to also ask that in the future, any policies that are addressed with family engagement, that the liaison, anything dealing with DPAC and Title I, the liaison is kept, is CC'd on this because I received it through Angela, and it should have come through you, Commissioner Sweeney. So I'm going to just ask that you keep, whoever the liaison is going to be, right now it's me, keep the liaison in the loop because February 8th, there are more changes coming down. Okay? So we need to work together on that to improve family engagement. So we need to talk about that, and I think we need to help those who are in the face area on that accountability issue because we have the data, but it's not, I'm not sure what we do with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Through you, President Brown. Linda Riddick-Barron did address us at the policy meeting, and she does have some framework for the accountability. She did go over that briefly at the policy meeting, but that might be something to have her come to the board.
Yeah.
And to explain how those, what those accountability measures are, what the benchmarks are, and how they're going to record those. So that is in place. It just needs for the board to be apprised of what's going on.
Okay.
Yep.
And so, you know, we are recasting, I guess, the role of the parent liaison and how that becomes a greater asset for the district. And so the accountability is important, and it is wrapped into what Linda Riddick-Barron and Mary.
Mary Ann Merrill.
Are working on. So I'll be prepared to come back to the board and share what that looks like.
Great.
And adding it to the reporting schedule as well.
Absolutely, yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Ann. Okay, next is use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. Ten, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. Eleven notification, superintendent's notification to the board.
I have a question.
Yep.
So, long time ago, I sat on this board, and I questioned the selection committee for the Waterbury Career Academy. Two questions. Are those individuals that are appointed teachers at the Career Academy or are they outside the Career Academy? And the most important question I'm going to ask, and I'm going to insist that I get an accurate answer, who maintains the waiting list? Who holds it? And who knows where the kids sit on it? Because I was told that it was held downtown, and it appears it's held at the Career Academy. So I want there to be a degree of accountability and transparency as to when that list is created, who's got it? So when a student says, I'm not coming, who controls where that next student comes from so that we're not cherry picking off the list? I was told initially it was, that it was held at the Career Academy. I asked that that be changed. I was told it was changed, and then I was told it never happened, that it was still being maintained at the Career Academy. I think that provides a very unfortunate lack of transparency to that process. So if someone could get me some answers about where those teachers are currently, and I'm going to insist that someone downtown, impartial to the process, holds that list after it's established.
Do you want to, Ms. Brown?
We'll, it's not for tonight.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions? We do have an executive session this evening. So, do we have a place to have an executive session?
We can use the President's office.
Okay. All right.
Motion to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.